All right. I think it's time. John, you want to lead us into our invocation?
Yes. Dear Reverend Father, we just thank you for today, Lord, and we just ask you be with each and everybody here, Lord, and just keep a hedge of protection around our community and just help us make wise decisions for our city. These things we're asking in your holy precious name. Amen.
Samantha, you going to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. We'll start with roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindebury.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deanna McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
And Jimmy Conde is absent. Our city clerk and city attorney are both present. So next item is the adoption of the agenda. I do need to make an amendment to the agenda.
No.
I would like to add item four under new business to approve ARPA funds for the library. We have a handout for that. Can I make a motion to approve this change?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our August eighth meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those?
No. No, but I'm guessing that in the original, there's like on one of the pages, I'm missing C.
I'm part of B.
And part of B. And the other one, I'm missing D.
They didn't print off very well, did they?
Yeah, on mine. But you found.
I bet they're in the Word file.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept it anyway.
Second, does anything suit with that? No.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum where we ask anyone who would like to address the council, please do so. We ask that you try to keep your remarks within two-minute timeframe. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? We'll let the audience go first.
Yes. I was looking.
Yes, ma'am. Tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Stitt. And Maria is going to say something about this later, but I just want to give a little extra plug. This coming Saturday morning at the library hall at 10:30, there's going to be an environmental scientist named Eric Fusiler. And I went to hear him speak in the spring when we were trying to do research about the ordinance. And his title of his talk is environmentally friendly yards. And he's really good. It's the same talk that I heard him give in the spring. It's very short, just like an hour. He has a great PowerPoint. And it's just, he's a good speaker and it's really interesting. So if y'all want to learn more, I'm just trying to spread the word far and wide that he's coming and I think he's well worth listening to.
And when is that?
Saturday morning at library hall, right?
10:30 morning.
And Maria just told me she's going to have coffee and chocolates and I'm going to bring some cookies. So there will be, you know, food. So anyway.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Anyone else? All right, what do you got, John?
I just want to thank the city, Chad and Isaac. Isaac came here, but over the weekend, Thursday and Friday, the city went above and beyond helping West Fest. And we appreciate it so much. Just thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you all, too, all the people that worked on it to start with, we had to get together.
Okay, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. First up is planning commission. Jimmy, are you giving the report?
Yes. We had a couple lot splits. And we also discussed some of the subdivisions and planning and development as far as for green space. And that is basically hit in a nutshell. We've kind of waiting on Juliette to get back and that way we can kind of move forward. We've kind of needed a little bit of a break because past couple of years, it's been meeting after meeting, you know, at least two meetings a month. And we've did a little bit of a break.
Any questions for Jimmy on the planning commission? No?
Just at some of our future meetings, it would be nice if, you know, if we could have a little more attendance. I'd really appreciate it from everybody.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is court report. Tracy?
Okay. I was looking over my report and I was like, wait a second, I did not put in last year's stuff. And then I went back and I got it just a minute ago and I'm like, hmm, maybe that's why I left it off. Anyway, last year in August, we were at 55,000 for our disbursement. And this time we are 36,000 or 38,000. So we were down about 6,000 from last month, but we're down almost 20,000 from last year. And I was looking, I mean, our citations are down 50 from last month, but we're down 700 from last year. And we have, you know, for the total. But we're almost like at half for last year on citations. I'm like, that must be wrong, right? I don't know. That's just, I just can't believe that those numbers are that far down. We are, do not have a shortage of things to do. But anyway, we had the people come out today and they had put the window tint on and it was bubbled and stuff because I guess they sent the new guy out. And so they, today they sent them back out and did it. It looks a whole lot better already. And it still needs a couple of weeks to cure. And then we'll be spending our ARPA funds or part of them. We have sent in the payment to get our, the vital records where we do our storage. We've sent in the payment to get all of that out of storage. And they'll be bringing that to us, but until they get the payment, they won't schedule that. We're hoping to have it, we're hoping to have it, you know, in about six weeks maybe. So that during our slower time for, over the holidays and stuff like that, that we'll get a lot of it scanned and gone through. I really think after looking over it, that a lot of it is just, does not need to be here. I think it's from 1997. Obviously, it's more than 10 years. And I think a lot of it can just go. So then we'll need to see how much it'll cost to get shredded and that sort of thing. And I was hoping to save the $160 a month. And then I talked to, I talked to our IT guy and he says that one of our backup drives has gone down. And he wants us to switch this other thing. And he said it would be the subscription part, not counting the hardware, $150 to $300 a month. So I'm like, well, it's a good thing I'm getting rid of this, I guess. But I don't know where I'm going to come up with the money for that.
Okay.
So, and I don't know what all my other options are. He's getting me, he's getting me quotes. But he said that would take a couple of days to get that to me also. I think that is basically what I have.
One more thing.
Yeah. Oh, we have a metal detector. And every time I walk through the hall in the dark, it scares me to death. There's a big shake over there. So anyway, Washington County got new ones at their courthouse. And we had contacted them a long time ago, sometime last year. And told them, you know, we were, you know, how do we go about getting one? Where do I get quotes and things like that? And he said, well, we've applied for a grant. So if we get our grant, then you can have ours. So we did manage to get one of those. And our new police chief, he went and picked it up for us last week. He picked it up on Thursday morning, I think. And we used it on Thursday afternoon. And it was successful, but it takes a little bit more manpower to have somebody outside and inside at the same time. But I unplugged it too, because every time you walk past it, it yells at you. So we'll plug it back in for one day.
Okay. Any questions for Tracy? No?
Okay.
Thanks, Tracy. So Tracy was talking about bringing those vital records. And I'm not sure if everybody even knows that. But the city has certain requirements on, on the records that we have. And the court has different records on timelines and what to keep, what not to keep. Those have been stored somewhere in Springdale. There's a facility that stores that type of thing for cities. And we pay monthly for our space. And so since Tracy had moved us, I think that was last year, maybe the year before, when we started storing documents digitally here at the court. And then we, you know, went through the, we've jumped through all the hoops we needed to do to make sure that document storage is safe and it meets all the state requirements. It's a state website where we store a lot of that. But the idea is let's quit, quit paying that storage fee, get those documents in there, scan the ones that need to be scanned. The most likely there are things we're paying to have stored that have already exceeded their, their time span for, for document retention. So that's where, where we're at with that. And that, that'll be a good thing to get, to do away with that. It's not, it's not needed anymore. We can be much more efficient. And recalling it, like Tracy said, she's trying to get it delivered down here in six weeks to get it. So if somebody were to want something, there's a, a big time gap just getting it with it being stored up there. So that's good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How much does it cost us to store that? I remember when we put it in.
It's $125 a month right now. And, well, it was. And as of September 1st, it went up to $160 a month.
Geez.
Yeah.
So, yeah. All right, next is our library report with Marie. And we have a big announcement to make. Marie, as of September 1st, is now officially our library director. The library board met and hired Marie, offered her the position after a meeting with some others, and she accepted. So congratulations, Marie. We're glad to have you on board with the library.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to continue serving the library in this role. So as you can see, we actually didn't have a huge drop in our checkouts when school started. So I was really excited about that. We kept it up to 2,957 checkouts. We also had more attendance on our programs than I was expecting. We only had about nine programs. This month, this past month, and we had 140 people come. A lot of that was story times and also magic passports. I did want to point out that this month, we've got a few more exciting programs coming up. As Bonnie mentioned, environmentally friendly yards with Eric Fusiler is coming up. We're really excited about that. I think it's a really great way, after we've passed this ordinance, to like show people like these beautiful ways of doing your yard in an environmentally friendly way. And also part of the goal too is to make it a little lower maintenance for you. So that's kind of exciting, you know, lower maintenance yard. We also have our homesteading series. We're going to have Nancy Tar talking about different possibilities of how to do harvest preservations. And then we also have the Amazium coming out, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, also at 10:30. And they're going to do flying creations with the kids. So really excited about that as well. You may have noticed a lot of construction equipment over by the library. We are still open. But we have a new parking lot coming. So you may remember Blair had been working on this project for a really long time. So we're really excited to see that it's been forward. The ground has been broken. We're hoping to get people coming and paving hopefully around the 20th. As you know, with construction, sometimes dates may change a little bit, but I'm really hopeful that we'll have this done really soon. So we're really excited about it. So does anyone have any questions?
No?
Where are people supposed to park right now?
That is a great question. It changes a little bit from day to day. I'm going to be honest with you. The closer you park to Friends of the Library building, usually the safer you'll be. As far as like not ask, getting your car has to be moved. It seems like, I think they're like honing in on one area now. So I'm not really sure exactly when they're finishing up this part. So I'm kind of watching and waiting to see. But we have had parking. And everyone who's come into the parking lot is still able to find a spot. So, great question.
Are they walking through the?
The mud? Well, today it was mud. But we do have some part of it that they've kindly fenced off to make sure that like people know what the safe areas are to walk in. We have had to do a little bit of curbside service for our handicap patrons. But overall, people have been able to make it into the building.
Good.
Oh, I guess I should also mention that we are looking for another full-time librarian. And the job description is posted on indeed.com.
Anything else for Marie?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Next, police report. Chief Alaberton.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Council. Let's start off with the stats for August. We had 415 calls for service in August, which was up roughly 85 calls from this time last year. We have an uptick, for some reason, in animal complaints. Although we, I was told that in order to capture safely and humanely capture an animal, take them to the Animal Control Center for, for Washington County, they charge us $150 a day for that. So we're not going to try real hard to catch those animals. I just want everybody to be aware of that, that that would be taxpayer dollars that you probably don't want to spend if you call in an animal complaint, especially if it seems to be a harmless dog or something like that. Now, of course, we'll do what we have to do for vicious animals because that is a public safety issue. But we, you know, we don't want to come out of pocket too deep on that. We had 222 traffic stops and two, two city ordinance complaints, which one of those was also resolved through by speaking to them. I'm happy to say that we were able to hire a certified police officer, Officer Cole Taylor. He started this Saturday with, at West Fest, a comprehensive reduction to the public. He's going to begin his field training with Sergeant Riley tomorrow, actually. So four to six weeks and he should be ready to go and on the streets serving the citizens of West, West Fork. Unfortunately, we're also losing an officer at the end of this month, four close to the end of this month. So kind of back where we started. However, I've got some interviews set up that, with some certified officers who have very exuberantly expressed that they want to be a part of the West Fork Police Department. So hopefully their backgrounds will come out fine after their interview. And I hope to be completely filled up by the end of this month. And that's all I have.
What's the status on Clifton Place, the grass that's overgrown on that lot?
I have just finished writing a letter to send her a certified letter.
Okay.
And I will see what she does after that. If not, I will probably have to get with the city attorney to find out what the next steps are that we can take as far, you know, cutting it, placing a lane and all that type of stuff.
Because neighbors are still coming to me. And so I'm like, okay, I'm passing the word along.
Yes, ma'am. I have found out who the owner was, the neighbor across, well, the neighbor gave me the owner's business card and information. I won't say where she lives, but.
Yes.
And so I've kind of found out who owns it.
Any other questions? So Chief, and this goes back to Tracy as well, but you guys installed metal detector on Thursday.
Yes, we did.
Did we find anything Thursday?
We got three knives, a box cutter, and a can of pepper spray. So.
Who knows what's been coming into the court prior to having that?
Yeah, so it was a good thing. I ran the metal detector myself. I have more experience with that than I care to admit. But it's, 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 it's not like it used to be. People can't be on their best behavior. They don't even take court seriously most of the time, you know? Especially the, unfortunately, the younger generation. But, you know, they don't think about these things. They've always got a knife in their pocket. And they come to court with what they normally wear and here comes that knife. And this is where they stand. That's where the judge sits. Half, step and a half, and I'm standing over there. Bad things can happen.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is the Public Works report. Isaac is out tonight. He is at the Fayetteville Water and Sewer Committee meeting that they're having. It was scheduled the same night as, as our council. So Isaac went to represent us there. Not sure if he, we weren't sure if he'll even be able to speak. But at least he will get to see maybe what some of their thoughts are from, from the last council meeting. I did want to mention that after the past council meeting, a council member, Whitaker, from Fayetteville, reached out to me through email, just letting me know that after that meeting and after we had brought up some things that seemingly caught them off guard as far as the fact that we were capturing their eye on eye, that the four members of the council who sit on Water and Sewer Committee were at the Water and Sewer Department the next morning. So he was just trying to express that they are taking it seriously. They were a little bit perturbed that, that this has progressed that far and still had not been taken into consideration. So I think all of you guys were copied on the email, the last email I sent Saturday, or Sunday evening. Again, reiterating that this study is based on getting to a certain revenue amount. And that at the first meeting that we addressed them, we pointed out we were already at that revenue amount. And then also letting them know why we were there, because they had used an estimation for the amount of water they'd be, be treating for us rather than, you know, that's a digital meter. Isaac can pull that, that meter reading every day. So can the director of the Fayetteville Public Works. So a little aggravating that five years into this and they are still running us on that estimate. And when you think of that, they, their estimate was that they'd be treating 45 million gallons of water. In reality, we're sending them 120 million gallons of water a year to treat. So.
Don't they maintain that where that meter's at?
Yes.
City, family?
Yes. So we're actually sending them almost three times what they are estimating we're sending them. And so when you think of that from a revenues perspective, they would need to increase our rates to get us to that revenue if, if we were only sending that small amount. But it, it seems to, to make sense that we, if we're tripling what, what they say we're sending, that rate should stay the same, maybe come down. So hopefully that's where we'll end up. I'm not sure, do you, do you have that date for the next Fayetteville council meeting?
The 19th.
The 19th?
6:30.
6:30 or 5:30?
I'll check.
I think it's 5:30. So that'll be coming up next week. And I'm not sure if they'll have it, we don't know if they'll have a determination. When Mr. Whitaker reached out to me, he said, you know, the only thing that he can guarantee me was that they would, they would keep digging until they were convinced that this study was complete and accurate. And so we take him at his word that that's the case and, and that they're going to do their due diligence and.
They seemed like they were very shocked.
Yeah.
When the things that were said, they, they seemed really surprised.
Agreed.
Like they, they had no clue. So I felt like they hadn't discussed it at, at any point because they didn't know anything.
You're right.
They were taken back.
Yeah, and, and it's unfortunate, as I put in that email, you know, it would have been a professional courtesy to, to bring us into some of those discussions for the matters that involved us and, and Elkins. And here we are, they're, they're meeting tonight, Water and Sewer Commission's meeting tonight, council meets on the 19th. And I've had Mayor Penn from Farmington and Mayor Reed from Elkins both reach out to me wanting to know, had I heard anything? So the three mayors who have been actively, actively involved in, in this are still in the dark. You know, we're going into, to the next council meeting, still in the dark. And so that, that part of it's aggravating, not only for us, but for Farmington, for Elkins as well. So we'll see what, what comes of that. 5:30? So also in Public Works, Nick sent me an email. He's not able to be here tonight. And it was just an update on the Homestead project. And so that is moving forward. We did get approval, and this doesn't mean a lot to us, but it qualifies for a categorical exclusion. Again, that doesn't mean a lot to us. But what it means on Nick's side is when we, when we put that line through there, you know, we had to have a, what was that, what's the name of that profession?
Archaeology.
A what? An archaeologist?
Archaeo.
Yes. But they were out there making sure we weren't digging up Indian remains or anything.
Artifacts, yes.
Artifacts, yes. So with the limited digging that we're going to have to do on this project, we did get an exclusion for that. That just means the project's going to be a little bit cheaper.
Faster, too.
Faster, absolutely. So it, Nick is hoping to have a contract approved by the next meeting, October 10th. And they're going to begin survey work out there in early September. So it's, it's moving right along. The, the bids have to go out for that and be awarded by March 31st of '24. So that project should move fairly rapidly. Part of the rush is we're using a lot of federal and state dollars on that that, that we were able to procure for that. So they have to be spent in a certain time, timeframe. And so that's kind of driving the, the speed of the project. And then lastly, we talked last meeting about potentially getting a chipper for some citizens. Isaac has checked into some of that. So there, there's a local gentleman who has a chipper that would be willing to operate that, to set up and operate. He would do the chipping. He would also dispose of the material after the fact, the chips. And that would be at a rate of $1,000 a day. His, you know, his suggestion was that we, if we're going to do that, that we'd probably put that out there for a little while so that we, we know that we're going to have a couple of people show up. I think what he's saying is he's going to charge us $1,000 a day, whether it's one person that shows up or, or 15. The other option there is we could rent one. You can rent wood chippers for $695 a week. But we would have to supply the manpower, the fuel. We would have to dispose of, of the wood chips afterwards. So something to keep in mind. I'm not sure. I don't know if we have a big enough.
You can mulch with it once it's run through the chipper.
Yeah, and we gave a lot of that away.
It's not a bad thing at all.
Down at the sewer department. So something to think about and decide how we want to move forward. Again, if we have one person that, that has some yard waste, I don't know that it's, it's necessarily worth it for that. And we've looked.
I think we should send them a letter and tell them to clean it up themselves first.
Okay.
I mean, across the street, that's been there forever, forever, across the street from me.
And I know Isaac has looked into that a little bit since the last meeting.
I don't know who the owner is because they don't live here. It's an Airbnb, they said.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right. So that's an update on that. Any other questions? Water loss was fantastic this month.
It was. I looked at the difference there.
Sewer revenue was great, too.
Sewer revenue, sewer expense, yeah. Sewer expense was way down. Dry months are good to us. I think it's nice that, that we get that report each council meeting. A couple of y'all were at the Fayetteville meeting the last time when I mentioned that, that they'd lost almost four billion gallons of water through the first seven months of the year that they hadn't billed for. And so I, I did the quick math, actually, I think Christie did the math for me, but I gave it to them that that was a 43% water loss. And their public works director, they called him up there after that to ask him about it. He spent about, I don't know, 10 minutes explaining just how difficult it is to establish what true water loss is.
I did not understand. But we understand what all he was saying. He was tucking in circles.
So in West Fork, we, we label water loss as any water we don't bill for, whether Chief Myers runs that through a water hydrant, whether a tank overflows, or whether we're fixing leaks that month. We call it water loss if we didn't bill for it. But Fayetteville apparently gets really, really technical at it. And I was at least.
Technical or sensitive.
Yeah, maybe both. He did know what their 2018 water loss was. Wasn't sure what 2020. Anyway, certainly an interesting point of that meeting. I am happy that we do get that reported each month and we can stay on top of it as a council. Anything else concerning Public Works? Next is the Parks Report. Chad?
So in the last month, we've mainly just been doing our day-to-day maintenance and care of the parks. We're working on some projects, some off-season projects of the ball fields, getting them ready to add some dirt, doing some grading on those to get them back up in good shape. Would like to do that in the late summer, early fall. That way we're not rushing when in January and things, trying to get ready. Also, we're working on, we built a new bullpen area for the big baseball field. But we've added a couple of new bullpen areas to accommodate service to our smaller fields. And we've done most of that with AstroTurf and portal mounds that have been given to us. So the cost on all those projects has been minimal. We did have to do some fencing for the big bullpen on the big field. But mainly just working on those. We, I'm trying to schedule a parks meeting hopefully next week, but within the next couple of weeks. Wanted to work on budgets for next year, but also to make some final decisions on our stage. So I should have some updates on that at next month's council meeting. I'm also trying to schedule our Arbor Day celebration and tree planning. I plan to do that, get that scheduled sometime in October as well. We're looking at a few different locations to plant trees this fall. So we'll pick one of those. We're probably going to put trees at all those locations, but we'll pick one of those to do our actual celebration stuff on. So yeah, that, as far as the parks go, that's all I've got. I got something on the memorial, but as far as the parks goes, that's where we're at. If I've got any questions or anything on that or anything.
How'd your training go?
It went well. We went to a training up in South Bend, Indiana, and it was basically on the field machine that we'd purchased and attachments. We got tour of the facility and stuff. We've made some purchases from them in the past and it was pretty cool. I learned a lot of good stuff that'll help us.
Were you getting new attachments?
I'm working on it. But it's, it's stuff that'll run us out and be able to maintain. And it's equipment we can use outside of the ball fields and parks as well. And we have used some helping Isaac and area straighten up before you put saw and different things down as well. So it's coming in handy, so.
So I will say, Chad, before you go on to the memorial project, I think maybe I was focused more on it this past West Fest than in prior just due to the fact we've been talking about a stage that would have some mobility. And I've noticed this time that trying to get onto and off of that trailer could certainly be easier for some folks.
They brung us the wrong steps.
Ah, so anyway, it was making me think that...
Normally the steps they bring.
Yeah, that's something.
But it made me think about that, that having a mobile stage could really potentially make that a lot easier task and make it easier for folks to get onto and off of that stage.
Yeah, and we're looking at a couple of different options. There are some you can purchase and they're graded and they're set up all ready for that or a cheaper version or something that Suda needs, whatever it may be, building, starting with our own trailer and building what we need. But that's definitely something to keep in mind as we move forward on the access of that mobile stage.
All right.
On the memorial, I had a young gentleman, Boy Scout Noah Irwin, reach out to me about a project within the parks. This is how this initially started. We looked at some different things, but his interest, he helped when the, he's looking for an Eagle Scout project. And he helped on the Eagle Scout project that was done to help build the pavilion at the fire truck at the proposed memorial that we're working on slowly. But so he's interested in that. He's really interested in doing something, doing more at the memorial. So I talked to the mayor and discussed it a little bit. I really wanted to bring it to you guys to see what, because there's not, we don't have a lot of plans. We kind of had a direction down there and we got away from it. There was a committee one time and that kind of hasn't been. So I just wanted to see, he's interested in doing pretty much anything down there, but any landscaping, possibly even building some benches to put down there, things like that. So I really just want to bring it up. He's got some time, but he actually texted me again today. He's excited, he wants to get rolling. But before I gave him any answers, I wanted to talk to y'all and see what your direction and what y'all thought or if you've got any comments or questions or any advice on which way to go with that.
I don't think we must have put some benches down there.
Yeah, and the plans, the original plans, we have a couple of different designs that that committee worked on getting. And it calls for some benches and calls for some shrubbery. They looked at everywhere from doing bricks that could be sold engraved to just doing concrete, the cost could possibly be engraved as people donated towards the project and things like that as well. We could do something soft surface that he could probably do. I mean, there's a lot of different ways we could go there. But his project, basically, he will come in and do the work. He has to have at least 100 hours of volunteer hours. That's not just him. He'll get other scouts and parents and things to help him as well. They do try to raise money for the projects. That's part of the project is to go out and try to get donations and some funding for those projects. It doesn't always, like, they've done a couple of different projects. One for the parks, then one at the memorial that I was involved in. And we did have to kick in, buy some materials and things because they weren't able to raise enough money to take care of all of it. So there's, you know, there's a little bit of financial obligation if we do allow him to do something at the memorial as well. If he doesn't get the money to buy the materials, the shrubs and the plants or whatever he might put down there, we would have to be able to fund that, what he isn't able to fund.
So Chad, when, when is it that he has to have this project completed?
So he's got almost a year. I think he has till next June or July, sometime next summer. And I'm very impressed with the young man because most of them come to him like, they have to have it done before their 18th birthday. And some of them in the past have come to me and been like, I got this done in a month, so what can we do? But he's actually, you know, trying, but, so he's got some time. But he's very anxious and wants to get at least the planning part done. So I would like, if, I don't know what the next step is, but if we could get something rolling so we could give him some answers, if we even want him to take this on and do more down there.
I think so. And I think, I think we should probably try to get that committee back together. So it was, they'd been, they'd been meeting pretty regular and then COVID hit and that kind of turned everything on its head. And we've just never really came back together on that project. So I think that's something, and I don't know if you still want to head that up, but try to get, try to get that committee going again. We have a deadline for this young man. That will help spur the committee maybe and get some plans drawn up and decide what we want and how we want to, how we want to help him get ultimately what the city's trying to achieve down there.
Is he supposed to do the plans as well? I mean, is that something, is that part of this project?
I mean, that could be an option. I think we want to give him at least some direction on what we want down there. You know, I think at this stage for me, you know, for him, just give him some kind of answer. Yes, we're not sure yet. We need to form, get our committee back together. We need to get a plan and make some decisions on what we want you to do down there. But we do want you to be involved and you can do this as your project. Or if we're not ready to give that answer, say, you know, this is most likely something that we'd like, that you can be able to do, but we need a little more time. I just kind of need a direction on what, how to answer him and what to tell him, I guess. That's what I'm looking forward to.
Trust me, judgment.
We can tell him yes, that he can do the project, but it may take a little time because we've got to get our committee together and they've got to come up with a plan. As well as if he does, they may be similar, but you know, I think we should tell him yes. If he's, he's trying to be an Eagle Scout, I mean, that says a lot to me anyway. So just let, you know, he's got to be, you know, really interested in the project.
Yeah, and I had, I had my own things I want him to do. We talked about that and he was the one that was like, is there anything he needs done at the memorial? Because that's what he's really interested in and really, you know, has a passion, seems to be. I won't say he's, he's not bugging me whatsoever, but he reaches out to me quite often and he seems excited about it. So I think it's a great way to get that project rolling again as well.
So is there anyone on the council who would like to lean in on that committee as well? Yes?
Anybody else in here?
So we, Anne had worked on this for quite some time and we were starting to get some traction. We, we had some donations on that. We got the flagpole set. We got the pavilion built, fire truck moved down there. And we were really to a point where we felt like there was enough that someone could see there to see something going on and maybe start gaining some traction as far as getting some donations to really move that project forward. And then it kind of fell apart with COVID. But I think there's enough there that if we get some people involved in that project, I think we can really move it forward and get some funding to do some good things there. If anyone's interested, reach out to Anne or Jan and let them know. We'll get started back up on that.
And we will have to, if he starts his project, we will have to be willing to commit some funds to it as well. It's not a good law. Because he's not going to buy the monuments or, you know, but there's going to be some materials there. Mostly some, some kind of material to do the landscaping and things like that.
Well, we need to do it anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
Needs to be done, so.
I agree. And you're going to get some labor if nothing else. But usually they come up with some funding materials as well. And this kind of just, I've been thinking about this and it reminded me as well, since we're talking about reorganizing committees, we also need to look into a meeting with the Christmas parade and light contest committee as well. So that's just it. I'm actually going to need to talk to you about that. We need to get that.
Get it rolling.
Rolling again over here for you now.
Y'all get it coming from the float. And don't forget to bring candy with you.
So, okay, well, I'll tell the young man that is, that we do want to allow him to do this and we spend a little bit of time to get a direction and a design put together on what we want him to do. Okay? All right, anything else?
Thank you, sir. Chief Myers? You're bringing a book to the podium. Chad just brought a slipper of paper.
Well, I have more paperwork, but I had to give what I'm, what I'm going to give. It's my dog either. First of all, thanks for West Festival, letting us be a part with Pancake Breakfast. My goodness, it's over. But it is nice to interact with the community in ways that we don't normally get to interact with. I think we serve somewhere close to 500 altogether. By the time they quit counting, we have stragglers, so it's kind of hard to keep 100% count. We're at about 500. Very, very minimal costs because our community donated, saved us a whole ton of money. So thank you to everybody that did donate and help out. Boost and badges numbers came in and later or not, we were first place in the donations this year. So, and when I say that, there's seven or eight, nine possibly towns in Washington, Big County that do community boost center, boost and badges, and we beat them all.
We beat Springdale and Rogers.
Springdale, Rogers, Fayetteville, T Ridge, Grabit, Perry Grove. That was the biggest DOP in Perry Grove. But really, radio is, I always have to take some, but I don't have to. Maybe some down this year. So without, I don't really want to get into a budget, talk about any of this. But our Rural Fire Board met last, finally two weeks ago. It was the first time we've been able to meet since February, trying to get everybody together. They want to move forward with us buying the tanker truck. It's an extremely important need for our community because I'm down to where I only have three, four people on a good day that can drive the two that I have. So I need something that's user-friendly and easier to operate. The biggest push about it is not necessarily to have the council say, yes, we're going to give you this amount of money. I need to order the truck, we have to come on a build list. If I don't get on a build list now, the next build list, it'll run out and I won't get on until fall next year. So then we're looking at 2025. So to save time and to save 7% to 12% increase January 1st, if we get on a build list now, we're locked in. No money has changed hands until the truck's done, which will be possibly this time next year. So to do it, to get on a build list, I have to go into a contract with them saying that this, that the rules, somebody's going to pay for the truck. The rule's on board, paying their half. Not saying the city's got to pay half, but you know, I have some money in CD that we can use for that. So when we get to the budget time, we can look and see just, but to enter into a contract, I need approval from y'all to say, yes, we're willing to do what we have to do, so.
So that's me, like, we need to do it before January.
Well, just to save the money.
I mean, if it's going to go up that much, crazy not to.
And that's just what they're thinking now. I mean, it could be possibly more, who knows?
What kind of money you talking?
Truck itself is about $360,000. So our half would be, you know, city half would be $180,000. I have $66,000 in CDs, so that cuts you down to $114,000. So still a whole lot of money, I don't understand that. And the rule's not saying, well, look, the city has got to do half of this or we can't do. We'll do whatever we have to do to make this happen because it's a need. But to get into a contract, the mayor's going to have to sign it. He's not going to sign that without somebody saying it's okay to do it.
So we've talked about this a little bit with department heads. We've been talking through budgets, trying to whittle some of that down. This is something that we would probably pull out of reserves for rather than paying with sales tax dollars. But we have predominantly, we've had a great partnership with the Rural Board. And typically, on most of that equipment, Chief, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of that equipment, we've paid for half and the Rural has paid for half. And that's how we've worked that for ages. So this is something that the Rural has brought up. It kind of came up quick, but I think it's something that we definitely want to support in one way or another. Again, we don't know the absolute cost yet. Part of that's going to be what, you know, what's going to go into this truck? And, you know, what are those costs going to be once they get the full bill put together? But I think what we need now is the council on board for us to move forward in that direction with the Rural Board. I've asked the chief to get a meeting together with the Rural Board and myself so that I can get some more clarity on it. Or they, you know, I don't think they're wanting to finance it, but we don't know yet. Is that a possibility? Some of this is financed or is it just an outright cash outlay? And is the Rural Board wanting West Fork to pay half? We don't know. We assume they probably are just because that's just the work we've been done. So that's, I think that's kind of where we're at.
Exactly. That's just kind of where I stand. To move forward, for me to move forward with it and get on the list, I just got to get approval from y'all in the boards.
And like Chief Myers was saying, the Fire Department does have a CD that has some money in it that's been put there for, you know, something like this. So that would somewhat offset what the city is, you know, having to take out of reserves for that outlay, but...
I don't see a problem with it.
I don't either. We need it.
And just, this might be a silly question, but it's been chaos in my life lately. But is, are any, are we allowed to use any ARPA funds for that? Or is that like absolutely not?
Uh, you know what?
Sorry, I got quiet.
I didn't hear your question.
Are we allowed to use any ARPA funds? I'm like talking to you.
Are we allowed to? You know, that's a great question, Marty, and that's something that Christie would...
ARPA funds?
Are we allowed to?
Yeah, is that, is that not a, like a maybe a...
Yes.
We are not allowed to use any of those funds for that?
Yes, we can use ARPA funds for any purpose, so.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Let's do it, just...
I make a motion that we approve.
Half, right?
This is, yeah, well, that's what we normally do, but we... This is, yeah, well, that's what we normally do, but we, we need to just make a motion to let the mayor sign a contract if he, it's fair. I mean, let him make that decision when he gets there.
But if the city comes back and says, we can only do a quarter, we can't do a half, a, or third.
Yeah, we're not, we're not allocating any.
I'm not trying to tie you to a dollar figure at all, but.
We're just trying to move, move it forward to the next step.
Right, and we need to move it forward because that trunk is necessary, so.
So Tom would usually, uh, request that the council gives the mayor, uh, authority to negotiate, uh, this further.
And I, that's what I'm saying. I make a motion that we give the mayor the authority to move it forward. Thanks, Jeff.
So we have a motion and second, all those in favor of that say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.
That's all I got.
Okay.
That's the end question.
Any other questions for Mark? So what'd you guys raise?
I don't have which in my packet, so that's good.
You guys raised about 2,500?
Oh, no, we did better than that.
Did better than that?
The Pancake Breakfast?
Four, so.
I'm gonna go with, we're, we're more around 4,000. Which if you take the number of people at $5 a person was actually less than that. So we just through generous donations of.
Yeah, yeah.
Here, I'm paying for, you know, one, but here's enough, you know, for four, but, so we get a lot of that.
Yeah.
And Joe, like I said, the businesses down gave a lot.
I was gonna buy Steve Linkler's breakfast and he didn't show up. All right. Thanks, sir.
He didn't, cause I paid for it.
Leave me to it. Christie?
Okay, so our bank balances are at 20, I have an increased 24,000 so far this year. Um, our budgets are showing 312,000 under budget. I did add a column there and I made it in this last month, I can't remember if I did or not. Um, out on the side, three of the funds that we have actually budgeted, um, from reserve. So if the normal column there is in the negative, that's not very, um, it doesn't, it's not alarming to me because we actually have planned to be in the negative in three of those departments. So, um, Chad's the only one that's already gotten into his reserves, but his will probably actually.
It was budgeted.
It was budget, it was budgeted. It was budgeted, so. Um, sales tax is holding at a little over 11%. Uh, we've already discussed the Water Department a little bit, it's, uh, doing really good right now. Um, the bill that we paid this month that's not on here yet is actually, for Tofayville, is actually about $10,000 less than it was in August. So next, I foresee next month being good too, so a couple more dry months, maybe we'll do a pay for the end of the year total. Um, on top of that, we, Amanda and I have, uh, worked with a company called Munisipay. We are now set up to be able to take credit cards for some, um, fees. We're gonna be able to do that for park signups, so when they do, uh, spring and fall ball signups now, uh, we're gonna be able to take credit cards for that, uh, stuff like the water deposits, community center, uh, permits, that kind of thing. Um, when someone uses a credit card, they will be assessed the fees, the fees won't come through the city at all. Um, so that is in process, we've taken one so far. Um, I think once the news gets out, we'll, we'll take more of those, people are so used to not bringing those, all of our, uh, plumbers and all that that come and get permits or used to happen to bring his cash or check. So I think they'll be very glad to have that option, um, once that word gets out and they know they can do that, so. Um, I also have on my notes that we did purchase an unplanned vehicle in the street department. Isaac's truck's transmission went out completely, uh, we were not able to, or it wasn't feasible to fix it. Um, so he did find a used vehicle that we were able to get. Um, and I do not see that having a negative effect on the street budget. I think that'll all, offset itself fine. Um, he did also put a couple of lawn mowers and a tractor and two vehicles up for sale, uh, this month, and we've sold all of them except the Explorer. So if anybody needs an Explorer that does not run, um, make us an offer.
They more junk about yours.
Um, so that one's still for sale, everything else is already sold. Um, we are working on the budget. Um, we are hoping to be able to schedule a workshop for the council at the end of October for that. The 2019 city audit is complete, I think, I'm pretty sure I emailed that to all of you guys. It's also on the city website, if anybody needs to look at that in more detail. The 2020 audit is also complete, I have not gotten the final copies of that out yet, but I will, uh, hopefully this week or the first of next week. And just a reminder that we are having the fall cleanup, the first weekend of October, one day only, so October 7th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So pass the word on that if anybody can do that. My question? I'm sorry.
Any questions for Christie? Thanks, Christie. All right, next is old business, discuss the exit interview questions that Alderwoman Cottle brought before us. Has everyone had a chance to look over that? Any thoughts?
Perfect, beautiful. Condensed.
Very condensed.
Are we good with it?
Yep.
Council's good with us handing that out to anyone who vacates a committee position?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we do an exit interview with people, employees? Face, face exit interview?
We do none.
We should. That, you can learn a lot when people are leaving, that, because they're not scared anymore, so. Because.
Officer Williamson.
I already saw your eyes. Yes, sir. If you had, if you had any questions, you need to take it up with my new lieutenant.
Okay. We're about to conduct one right now. All right, so we will start, uh, handing that out to committee members and Jan, we will look at, uh, putting something together for employees as well.
I think that would, because a lot of times you learn good stuff.
Visit.
Yeah.
Don't have to be a handout, just a visit.
Even a face to face, yeah, because they'll be honest with you when they're leaving. Way more than any other time.
I think we, we are probably getting that to some degree on, from a verbal standpoint, right? Typically, you know, you're told why someone's leaving. Uh, but I, I think it would be, uh, it would be, I think, good for us to have something written, uh, to go in that file.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so too.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve that.
I second.
We have a motion and second to approve the use of this exit interview. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries, thank you for that work, Mr.. Um, just out of curiosity, did you use ChatGPT to put that together?
What is that?
All right, before we move into item C, new business, Isaac, you wanna give us any updates?
Sure.
Now, you went pretty long the first time, so it looks like this.
Already chewed up much of y'all's time, we're ready to. So basically what they've done is they've dropped it by roughly another 10%. We're going from $6.26 is what they proposed last time per thousand. We'll, with this new adjustment, we'll be paying 574 per thousand.
Which is an increase of over a dollar per thousand where we're current, from where we're currently at?
No. It's, uh, about 60 cents.
60 cents, okay.
We're at 519. Yeah, can't really get far enough that, yeah, I think we're at like 519 right now, 570. So, no change to the water side.
That, that increases to, yeah.
Yeah, from what they proposed last time, so.
Are they finished with it? I mean, is that their final or are they still?
I think we're pretty close to final.
Okay.
So we're still gonna argue.
Yeah, we are.
For more, but.
They're, they're getting their defenses set up for you, so.
Are they?
Yeah, that's pretty much what that meeting was about, so.
I'm glad I've had an effect on.
So.
Okay.
But yeah, that was about it.
All right, thanks. Thanks for going. So we'll move into new business. We have three ordinances under new business and I believe Alderwoman McKnight has.
Yeah, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and read the three ordinances tonight by title only?
I second.
We have a motion and second to suspend the rules and read these by title only, we'll do a roll call vote. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
So that motion passes, we can read these by title only. Would you read my titles?
Yes, ordinance number 518, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to lease purchase agreement between the City of West Fork, Arkansas and the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission for the purpose of reducing the interest rate on the financing of water improvements, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Perfect.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance 518?
I second.
We have a motion and second to pass ordinance 518, we'll do a roll call on that. Do we?
Before the emergency clause? Yes.
Pass it before? Okay. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
So that ordinance passes, next is ordinance for 519.
Let's do the emergency clause for this one.
Okay.
What?
Would you like to propose something else?
To read it by title, I don't know what I'm. To pass, to pass the emergency clause. Sure, I make a motion.
We have a motion to, to pass these by emergency clause.
I second.
We have a motion and second to pass these using the emergency clause. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, so that one passed with emergency. Next is ordinance 519.
Ordinance number 519, an ordinance accepting a lower interest rate in connection with a water and sewer revenue bond owned by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion and we pass it.
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass ordinance 519. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 519 is passed.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the emergency clause.
Third.
We have a motion and second to pass 519 with the emergency clause?
Yes.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Next is ordinance 520, Morgan's digging, trying to find that one.
I think it would be right after. That was water and sewer bond. Ordinance number 520, an ordinance providing for the establishment of a flood damage prevention program for the City of West Fork, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I make a motion and pass it. Second.
We have a motion and second to pass ordinance 520. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
And Don Rollins?
Yes.
I make a motion that we, what was it about the emergency clause?
Pass the emergency.
Pass the emergency clause.
We have a motion and second to pass this with the emergency clause. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindaberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deanna McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. For all those who are wondering about the technicalities of emergency clauses and reading by title only. So when we pass ordinances, um, we have certain requirements that we have to make sure that these are available to the public to look over. Uh, these have been made available to the public to look over, we post them in five locations around the city. But then also the emergency clause comes in so that we don't have to read these, um, for three months straight and take votes on them. So we're passing them, uh, within. They go into effect in 30 days, correct? Or immediately?
Effect immediately, as opposed to 30 days.
As opposed to 30 days, okay? So that's what all of that's about. And as you can tell, we don't pass a lot of ordinances in West Fork. Um, we have probably too many as it, as it currently stands. People forget what the ordinances are, don't they, Brian? All right, uh, item four of new business is using some ARPA funds at the library. And so as Marie told us earlier, they are doing the parking lot at the library. When they designed that parking lot, there was a piece of it that was, that was not covered under the initial bid work. And that was, we're building this parking lot, they've changed the, the look of the parking lot, there's gonna be a, uh, a bio swell uh, that runs along what is currently the street and the sidewalk, where we, we currently have an entrance and exit coming in there. And so what this is, is, uh, we still have the entrance coming off of Main Street, but what this will do is it will pave a, a piece that comes out over by Library Hall and give us, give us the, the entrance exit on.
Garfield.
Garfield, I never can remember that street name. Uh, but it'll still give us an entrance and exit onto Garfield Street. Uh, but it will, it will run out and, and hook around over by Library Hall. And so, uh, that came in at, uh, 7,000 and some change for the paving, the striping. There's some, uh, parking ballards, uh, that they wanna put on that as well. So what we're asking for is, uh, to approve $8,500 of ARPA funds to cover that piece of the project.
And is that on city property?
Yes.
Yes.
I couldn't remember if Library Hall got that lot or if the city got that lot. Did we, because we traded some land?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, remember, you were against that.
Yeah.
Was I?
Yes.
That's why I was not remembering how it went.
Well, so it, it's gonna, it sounds like it's necessary to do the project there.
Yeah, it certainly, certainly makes the project a little bit better.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the $8,500, second.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All of those in favor of that say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? That.
No, I, I mean, no.
You can't love two times.
I meant, yes, sorry.
Mary, you see what I have to deal with? We only do this once a month. All right. That brings us to other business. We put this on in case council members would like to bring up other business at the end of meetings. Is there any other business?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
There is. The community center. Why do we not have the air conditioner running that fixes, that goes to the kitchen and the bathrooms?
That is a fantastic question.
It's awful.
So that unit is.
Deceased?
Deceased.
Okay, then we need another one to replace it. So can we do that? It needs to be done, it's terrible.[1776.62]
Do we have quotes on that yet?
I brought it up also earlier, two meetings ago.
It's like, haven't we talked about this?
Yes, we have.
It is an issue, let me tell you. And you get down there, if you're, if you're working down there, it's almost impossible. I mean, it's really awful, so we really, seriously, I mean, people are paying good money for the, you know, to prevent the building, so it should be working.
I have quotes for the next meeting.
We have quotes for the next meeting. So just to remind everybody where this came about, we passed some sales tax increases to, to some remodels several years ago. And one of those remodels was the community center. And this was no fault of anyone, but we decided we were going to do those remodels. We passed a sales tax to, to get some funding for that. Well, it was three years before we started building, and building prices had went up. And so, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that is one of the things, one of the changes that we as a council made to that, to that project, was to try to keep the, the unit that was in there so that we could keep that project within budget. And it has since.
If we're going to keep it, I'm going to use a blanket of roses on this.
Okay, so I think where we're at is, we'll get quotes on it, and we will probably have to approve some money for that. I don't think we have any.
They don't do it for free.
Right, I don't think we have that money budgeted for that, so.
Well, it's got to be done, it's crazy.
All right, so Christie will get us some quotes. Anything else, other business? What are you thinking, Misty?
Yeah, I was thinking, well, it's a good thing we didn't need it for a cooling center, right?
Yeah, so I think we would have used probably the fire station to start with for that, but.